I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so thank you, everyone, for taking your time out of your day to listen to the council's discussion on the land use plan. I wanted to provide some expectations for everyone during this conversation. We will be breaking apart the conversation into two sections. The first part being the Perrysburg Heights community section of the plan, and the second part of the conversation will be the rest of land use plan. We will have a short recess at the conclusion of the Perrysburg Heights community plan. I am also asking that anyone who does want to take time to speak, if you could, please keep your comments within three minutes. Kate's going to be helping assist with that, our law director. Although I am starting the meeting, I will be passing the floor to my fellow councilman, Tim McCarthy, as he has been leading much of the conversation within his committee. But before I do that, I did want to make a couple of quick comments. First, I would like to address the absence of Councilman Coolman because of concerns raised about his affiliations with some of the limited liability companies that own part of, excuse me, that own property located within the Perrysburg Heights. Councilman Coolman feels it is best to abstain from the conversation and vote as it pertains to the Perrysburg Heights portion of the land use plan. It is important that our constituents, as well as the members of the Perrysburg Heights community, feel confident that this conversation is being held in an objective and unbiased manner. And Mr. Coolman does not feel comfortable participating further in the conversation regarding the Heights if there is even an inkling of doubt as to the motives behind his position or vote. I'd also like to address that Councilman Van Hoozen, who regretfully cannot be here tonight as he has come under the weather, so in order to make sure, given the recent season, the last couple of years, to make sure he doesn't pass anything, he is not going to be in attendance here tonight. And personally, I would like to make an attempt to clear a few issues that have been discussed within the community. I know for the past several months, there is conversations and concerns regarding aspects of this plan. At this point, the conversation has seemed to delve more into some conspiracies or talking points than facts. I hope that what I say may be able to ease some minds, but I also understand that historically the city has not given an impression of listening to the Perrysburg Heights community. I believe I can speak for some of my fellow council members when I can say that that is not this council. We do want to listen. At no time will I also support Perrysburg City Council vote to allow the city to forcibly annex and use eminent domain on the residents of the Perrysburg Heights, force them from their properties, or even raising homes to make a park or for any commercial development. This initial plan that was put forth by the land use plan was actually rejected by council, and a request was given to make some drastic changes to that initial plan, which we'll be seeing some of these options here tonight. So with that, I would like to pass the floor to Councilman McCarthy.
Thank you, Jonathan. The way we're going to proceed tonight is, as Jonathan alluded to, we'll allow some time for public comment. I want all of you to know, though, this has been, this was the subject of a public hearing before city council on September 7, 2021. It then also was discussed in the planning zoning committee at four different subsequent meetings. Now, some of the faces here I recognize as people that attended those meetings, but not all. When the council or the committees meet, a full report of minutes is then made to the whole council. So I want you all to know that we have heard extensive comments about the concerns of Heights residents. We fully understand them. And so I want you all to know that this isn't the first we've heard of this issue. It's been the better part of nine months now, I think, we've been talking about this. And so it's, we're well acquainted with the Heights as a neighborhood, and it's a long, valued, respected institution in the community. As I said in the paper, the discussion, as it has dwindled down to the end, has really just been about how do you mesh the commercial development that already exists along State Route 25? And we wanted to try and provide a very helpful and attractive border and transition to the Heights community behind it, the Heights residential community. And so with that having been said, is Brody somewhere in the room?
Turn here.
Oh, Brody. Brody, then, at the committee, we essentially, we narrowed this down to four options that we present to council for discussion tonight. And I see you've got them up on the screen. If you want to give us a quick account of what those options are, just so everyone knows what's up for discussion tonight.
Yes, what you see on the overhead for this evening are several, what I'll refer to as city-sponsored, options or solutions to the problem. And then option number four was kind of an internal option that was presented, I believe, by Leah or endorsed by Leah and perhaps Mr. Paul Velazos in the back. So what we've done is we've kind of inventoried these and provided a short description on what these items are, so that as people are coming up and talking, or our council members are speaking with you this evening, we can all reference options by number and not get confused about the long history that this process has been, so everybody has clarity on what those are. So briefly, as we go through those, option number one that was advocated by members of Perrysburg Heights at one point through the process was to just remove the Heights from the plan in general. This kind of brings us back to where we originally were at. The original land use plan came out, it did not include Perrysburg Heights. There was discussion on how that might have been an error, so we had gone back and included Perrysburg Heights. So option number one is, a simple explanation is to, we just remove all the references to Perrysburg Heights. We plan for other areas in the community, and essentially, how the Heights develops will just be a result of market pressures and people's willingness to buy and sell property, that sort of thing. So there won't have any formal structure to that future planning effort. Number two, option number two, many of you will probably see this map here or have seen that, this is essentially what option number two is referencing. What you'll notice, it's, let's see if I can pull it up here on this side, it's showing up on both. So this shadow line here that you kind of see is almost a watermark in the background is the existing Perrysburg City and Perrysburg Township border. So anything to the left of the jagged line currently in the city of Perrysburg, so within our jurisdiction, is zoned in the city. Anything to the right of that jagged line is in Perrysburg Township. So option number two, which was previously discussed, creates a hard line that you can view that in some ways as a bookend to the commercial development. Because one of the questions that the Heights has always had is, where does the commercial development stop? This solution answers that. It stops at the blue line. So this proposes a bookend to the commercial development that will not allow it to push any further east than the blue line. The heartburn with this plan, as we understand it, are the areas where there are homes in these small pockets here, properties along these areas here that are currently being used for residential, that through this plan, the city would recognize as being eligible or preferred for commercial development. Again, not to force anybody to sell their home, not to force anybody to change the use of your home. It's just saying if that property would ever turn over through a sale, the city would recognize that and would support that to be developed commercially in that area, but again, not east or to the right side of the blue line. So that's essentially option number two in a nutshell. So I'll jump back here. Option number three, again, this option, just like number two, the Perrysburg Heights would remain in the document that we have, the 138-page document that we have, it would remain in there. The current jagged line that separates the city and township will limit the commercial growth along State Route 25. So essentially, what that is saying is, instead of the blue line separating the commercial on the left and the residential on the right, it would be the jagged line, but the same concept. We'll jump back. And option number four, the Perrysburg Heights community will remain in the land use plan, just like options two, three, and four. This option will identify the current boundary of Perrysburg Heights and declare that the city will not annex and/or rezone any current Perrysburg Heights property with or without property owner consent. That is the most restrictive option from the city of Perrysburg. And I guess there are some cons to that as far as city officials are concerned, and we'll go through those as the conversation develops. But there may be folks in Perrysburg Heights along, jump back here, along the existing commercial areas, which I believe one of them may be in this area here, that the city, should it adopt that plan, it should not and could not rezone any of those properties to meet a commercial use, even if the property owner who is selling it wishes to sell it for that purpose. So again, there are some challenges and some drawbacks to that from a development standpoint. But these are the four options that through our several month, year-long process have seemed to, I'll say, have the most support or been the most talked about. So again, I wanted to itemize those so that everybody's on the same page, briefly about what they mean and provides a number to that. So when you're speaking about those, if you use those numbers, everybody in the room will know what you're talking about.
And Brody, using that map there, can you, I mean, you deal with, you're a planner, you're an urban planner, you deal with percentages of land面积 and all that all the time. What portion of the property that currently resides in the township is to the, I guess it would be east of the north-south line?
You're probably talking about west.
West, okay. So it was one or the other.
The Councilman McCarthy is talking about these small pockets that I referenced in here that are currently in Perrysburg Township, but as I've indicated here, under option number two would be planned for commercial.
Oh, okay. Now I see your map. You've got it, you've got legend or existing zoning and used to remain.
Correct.
What percentage is that of the Heights that reside in the township?
I have not, I've not done a square foot calculation, but I would feel very confident in saying that 80% of that is represented in white. So in other words, that 80% to the east side of what I have shown there, as a roadway there in blue and a landscape buffer just to the right of that, would be unaffected as a result of the adoption of plan, option number two.
All right. Well, I think that gets the options in front of us. As Jonathan, I think, mentioned, we're asking folks to observe a three-minute limit because there may be a lot of people who won't speak and have a limited amount of time to do that tonight. Kate will be showing us a card when your time is near. Is Leah here? Oh, there she is. For the folks who don't know, officially or unofficially, Leah and Paul have been primary spokespersons. So if you're okay, Leah, if you want to come up first, I'd like to have you offer any thoughts you might have.
So they're asking you guys to speak up. Do I need to write my name and stuff like normal?
Yeah, because the folks are listening in, so.
Okay. Just saying. My name is Leah Dela, oh, I live at 25614 Broad Street. That's in Perrysburg Heights. You know, you guys talk about, you know, we've been over a year, right? You seem to find that this is the squeaky wheel, shall we say? This is what happens when citizens stand up and they decide that they don't want something, they're gonna rebuttal back. This is what happens when councils have to actually go and do what they take oaths to do. You know, whether you guys say eminent domain is on or off the table, there's always a possibility, and that's been said through other council members. I have it on recordings, I have it here in public forums. People have said this could happen 20 or 30 years down the road, but guess what? Some of us are still going to be here. Maybe you guys won't. You know, some of you sat on this council for over 30 years. Some of you are new to this council. These are people. Some of you work for organizations that aspire and aspire to do other things in your career, become state representatives, become judges, become mayors. You really need to start thinking about now, because now we're here and we're fighting this. It's not the older generation anymore that's, we're going to do the right thing because somebody's telling us, sits in front of us, that this is what you're supposed to do. Now, now we come up and we say, we have rights, we know what's allowed for us, this is unfair, and we're gonna, we're gonna push that. We're constantly gonna push that. I'm not gonna sit back anymore and let things sweep under the rug that Perrysburg has done for many years. And Tim, you know, because you've sat here the longest. So my question to you is, how can you sit here for 30 years and see all this stuff that has happened to this community and think that we're now not going to keep taking it? We get a say. We're landowners. These people get a say. The 151 people that you guys, that talk to me on a regular basis, get a say. Perrysburg's got enough money. That was actually said by one of your council members. So do the right thing this time, because enough is enough.
Thank you. Later.
Somebody want to bring up, if you'd like to get up and speak? Anybody wants to get up first?
I'm Juan Artiaga. I reside at 426 East Third Street here in town. I support the Heights. My kids live in the Heights. My grandkids are from the Heights. It's disappointing to see that we, I don't believe anyone in here is in favor of the plan that Brody has brought up. We're all against it. We don't want no part of it. And this has been said numerous times. We all have families. We've all taken a time off to come over here to debate an issue that we already feel should have been dead in the water to begin with. We don't approve of it, and we don't want it. The areas that Mr. Walters usually is talking about affects three of my kids with eleven. So yes, I'm very much against it. Now, as a resident of Perrysburg, I'm embarrassed, because this is nothing more than greed, people looking for power. Some of our residents have received letters from corporate people that are interested in buying their properties ever since this plan came out. It's embarrassing that we had to pick up the paper and find out that the city is trying to take over the Heights certain portions when the citizens here are against it. So it's not, you're supposed to represent the citizens of Perrysburg, the citizens as a whole. We are citizens of the township, no part of the city. And no one time did anybody has come up and spoken to any member of Perrysburg Heights Community Center as a group, than an individual. But we've got about 50, maybe 400 residents, that they could have had an open policy to get an input, and it was not done. So I'm very much against it, and I'm embarrassed that this is still going on. So I ask that a decision be made that we leave the Heights alone and leave it as residential?
I have a quick question, Dave.
Thank you.
One, I have a quick question for you. So you would tell us to go with option one? That's your recommendation? We go with option one?
Yes.
Leah didn't answer that either, and I'd be interested in her answer to that.
Well, from my understanding, what we had requested was that the jagged line remained, and that's where commercial development starts. And the verbiage, I just looked through the emails, me and you exchange, and the new exchange with the constituent of Perrysburg City, and the verbiage is a little different. So while, it's a bit different, so I think the jagged line should remain, and no more commercial development be at all, even if annexation were to occur. And that is where three and four kind of confuse me, because that's not what we have discussed, and that's not what the emails reflect. So that's why, Jan, I can't give you a three or a four, but I can tell you that.
What if you have a combination of two?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a combination of three or four.
Yeah. Well.
My name is Natasha Sanchez. I grew up at 12505 Fort Meggs Boulevard. I'm the fourth of five generations of my family to live in Perrysburg Heights, and we've lived in at least five different residential houses within the Heights in my 32 years of life. And I just wanted to say, to do number two, I mean, I feel like y'all are smart enough to know nobody wants that, and you would all be vilified for that option. But not only that, my grandma and grandpa, they had strokes years ago. We have family on both sides of the line who have to help take care, help to buy groceries, help to mow the lawn, and to move them from their house, which is on the west side of the line, move them away from my uncle who lives on the east side of the line, who helps them the most, is there every single day with them. That completely ruins our entire fabric of our family. And not only that, my sister's kids live there. They love living there next to my grandma, with my mom there and everything, and it ruins so much. So I just want to say, option two obviously is stupid. But I'm with Leah in that the verbiage in option four leaves it a bit murky on whether if a property that is, so it says, you will not annex or rezone any current Perrysburg Heights property with or without property owner consent. So if something happens to someone's property, does that change that? Does that mean that it can be annexed and it can be rezoned?
Not according to option four.
So if it's old property, not just the building on the property?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So there's the land, and then the structures on the land, right? So if someone's house gets set on fire, does that mean that, well, now we're starting fresh in this new thing? Okay. I just wanted to be very clear on that.
But do you see, Brody, why I'm saying that you understand why I'm saying three and four is a little different from what you had said in the email, right? It's a tear and a gap.
I don't.
I do.
I mean, the intent is the same. Whether I'm going to say it exactly the same every single time with the exact same words, perhaps not, but the intent is still the same.
I think it should be the same across the board for no confusion. I mean, that's why we got here.
Well, what I will say is, we can't argue options three and four, because these were things that I have put into text that all of you folks have asked to be included as options. These weren't, these aren't my creations that are ill-intended. As I explained, option number four is, you are asking to lock Perrysburg Heights up in its current form from here on out forever. It will not be annexed, it will not be rezoned, it will not grow, commercial development will not take place on any property that is currently part of Perrysburg Heights. I don't know how that gets any.
I think it's because the words, the words in the current jagged line are in option three, but not in option four.
It is.
But I'm saying specifically.
The current jagged line is the current boundary of the Perrysburg Heights. It's the same thing.
Oh, so then why do we have three and four then?
Because four talks about annexation and rezoning. Option number three does not.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, though, is that there should.
If we're arguing over the word jagged line versus the current boundary.
Hey, you're very specifically mean.
Please interpret those as being the exact same thing. It's just, as I'm writing these out, and this has been a year-long process, I may not textually say it the same exact way every time. I'm explaining to you now, in case there's confusion, that the word jagged line and the current boundary of Perrysburg Heights, which is the jagged line, is the same thing. So I apologize if there's confusion on that. There is not an intent to deceive anybody on that. We need to move past the arguments of boundaries and jagged lines, because it's the same thing. The difference between three and four is the addition of annexing or rezoning, further strengthened by the statement of with or without property owner consent.
Okay, so.
So that's, that's a one, option number four is an elevated position from option number three.
So, Jan, do you see what I was saying?
No, I read it the way he did, that the current boundary, which is a jagged edge, would be the line.
So then can you explain to me how you thought that I had said three and four should be a combination?
It was just, I had to reread it after I saw that, and then I saw exactly what Brody was saying.
I just think that there should be consistency across the board, between email exchanges and what we're seeing today, and that's specifically why I asked.
I read it the same as either way. I mean, it's a current boundary, the jagged, and I agree with Brody's, the current boundary is a jagged edge. The only difference between three and four is that last half of that sentence, that sentence, last half after it says boundary.
To reflect my time, the last thing I wanted to mention is that option one would be the most damaging, aside from option two, strictly because to remove the Perrysburg Heights from it completely would leave room for the future encroachment of the neighborhood anyway. So it would pretty much just be pushing the camp down the road, and I just don't think you guys should vote for option one or two.
Can I clear something up? Can I, you mentioned something about if somebody's structure should burn down, if their house should burn down, does that automatically change that zoning? You got to remember, that person still owns that piece of property.
Exactly, yes.
So nothing would happen until they want to sell it.
I was just, I was saying, current properties, I wasn't sure if that just meant the current structures on the property.
Yes. I mean, nothing ever happens with annexation or rezoning until the trigger is the property owner wanting to sell their property. That's the most important thing to remember.
Thank you.
My name is William Roper. I live at 1242 Harold Street. That blue line that runs right to my property, what's going to happen if that goes through?
Well, like I just said, nothing happens until someone sells a piece of property. Right. You would have to sell your property in order.
Who's going to buy it? What is the road going to put a road to there?
Okay, I want to answer your question first.
Who's going to buy it and say you're going to put a road to there? What's it not going to be good for?
If it gets sold, then there wouldn't be a road.
Pardon?
If it doesn't get sold, there wouldn't be a road. That's where you get to understand, a comprehensive plan tries to look out 10 or 20 years and say, okay, if land transactions occur, what would be the best way they would look for the community as a whole? And so it's an attempt to have a vision for the community. The land use plan has a park in the middle of the downtown area where Perry's Landing is. We're not asking it to hear Perry's Landing down. We're trying to say, if you look at the entire city and the entire community, that'd be a nice place to have a central park. But Perry's Landing isn't coming down, and we're not coming in to take, we're not going to exercise eminent domain to take your land to build a road. So no, if you decide to stay there, there's no road, or it's going to have to be located somewhere else.
Paul Velazos, 503 West Brent Street, and I also am on the board of the Perrysburg Heights Association. I just want to try to put a little context into, I guess, where we've been and where I think the community, based on the people that I've spoken to, want to see things go. First of all, we have had, this all started in the spring of 2021, so we've been at this for a year. At the Perrysburg Heights Association, we have had meeting after meeting after meeting with residents, and they have continued up until. And they have continued up until recently after Brody put forward his revised plan. I know that Leah and others have had many, many conversations with residents. They've had also some meetings in addition to those that I've been involved with. And there isn't any, not one person who's voiced support for the idea of expanding commercialization within the existing boundaries of the Perrysburg Heights neighborhood, not one person. And there have been dozens and dozens and dozens that have appeared in this room over the course of multiple meetings before committees and the council as a whole, and even the plan commission over the course of a year. Not one person in this community or any other part of Perrysburg community that has sat up here and spoken in favor of the city's original plan to turn Perrysburg Heights into Levis Common Two, or its modified plan to take part of it and commercialize it. Not one person has spoken in favor of any of those things. And there isn't any question that nobody in the Perrysburg Heights community is in favor of further commercialization. So from, from the perspective of members of the Perrysburg Heights community, the question becomes, how do we best protect the neighborhood? Now, in 1993, as you've heard me say before, there was a comprehensive plan that specified that Perrysburg Heights would be a single-family residential neighborhood, and that it would be protected and preserved. Language of that sort was in there. What has become clear as the months have rolled by is that the city administration has no intention of respecting the limitations of that 1993 plan. And you've heard Brody say that if we haven't a plan at all, then it's gonna be anybody's game. So that's their approach, which means that we now have to restate and clarify and send a clear message to the city administration and the existing plan that no further commercialization will occur within the existing boundaries of the Perrysburg Heights community, and that it won't be protected and preserved as a residential, single-family residence, community. Now, option three comes close to saying that. I would make language even stronger. That was not prepared by us, it was prepared by Brody or maybe with the help of others. But that's the solution, and I think that you will hear people in this room supporting that position.
Paul, I have a question for you. Option number four, at the conclusion of the last meeting, is my interpretation of exactly what you asked for.
Well, here's the problem with option number four, because it misleads people. It misleads people into thinking that if this man doesn't help to sell his property, or this man doesn't sell his property, then everything will be fine. The problem is that developers are sitting there salivating. And if they're, and if they know that they can buy land and go to the city and request annexation, and then request rezoning for commercial purposes, and if the city's land use plan allows that, then that's what's gonna happen. So it doesn't matter whether he sells or not, his neighbor eventually will. And his neighbor will then sell to a developer, who will then go to the city and ask for annexation, and then once the annexation is granted, they will request rezoning for commercial purposes.
I interrupt it. I think what option four says is that the city would not annex or rezone any property.
Oh, that's it. This is exactly what you asked for.
Yeah, that's the problem, it's without consent. And of course, the developer is gonna immediately grant consent.
With or without-
The city can't do it.
The city would not be annexing any property or rezoning with the property owners or even without the property owner's consent. That means that if someone was to purchase the property as you, this is the way I interpret it. If someone were to purchase Mr. Roper's property here and request it annexed into the city as commercial, the way I read option four is, the city wouldn't even hear them. Wouldn't even hear the-
No matter who owned the property, the city wouldn't-
So I understand option four.
Correct. That's not how I read that, but maybe that's probably what Leah was talking about when she said a combination of three and four.
The only thing I wanted to add is that-
I have a question for you about this.
Paul, option four is, and I'll defend Brody to this extent, I thought that's what I heard you say.
Oh, I see. No, we'll rezone any current Perrysburg Heights property with or without property owner consent.
And I have issues with option four, I'll talk about later.
Well, there may be.
I just so happen to understand what the options are. Option four is the most restrictive. Are we all on the same page there?
Yeah, okay, I think I, I think I got that now.
Okay. I just-
But I don't want to lose track of my point, which is, what the residents of Perrysburg Heights want is, is, is language in the plan. I mean, whatever, whatever form that language takes, it needs to give a very clear message to the city administration that, that the property inside the existing boundaries of Perrysburg Heights will not be developed commercially. Whatever that takes, the language can be worked out, but that's the ultimate objective.
Well, but there's an inherent conflict in what you've said, Paul, because you said, if Mr. Roper doesn't want to sell his property, that's fine. But if his neighbor does, then it's at peril. So you're saying you're not interfering with the rights of that, you want to protect the rights of Perrysburg Heights residents. If the resident wants to sell it, you're saying it can't be an extra rezon. Even if it's sold on a completely willing basis, at a price the resident really finds to be quite attractive, at a time in his or her life when he may move to a different property in the Heights or he may move somewhere else. So I just want to point out that you say you're trying to protect the residents of the Heights, but in one sense, you're trying to limit their rights to sell their own property.
That's right. I guess that's right. I mean, you know, it's like saying that, you know, people in, people in almost any neighborhood in Perrysburg bought their house with the expectation that it would be residential. Right? So to the extent that one person decides that they look like to make some additional money, it might have an adverse impact on the rest of the community, that doesn't justify that person's wish to, to commercialize their property and make, make the extra money. That argument has been made a number of times to these folks, and again, I think, I think it distracts their attention from the ultimate question, which is, the Perrysburg Heights community wants to protect their neighborhood. It has been a single-family residential neighborhood for a hundred years, and they don't want to see that changed, and they don't want to see commercialization slowly approach and take over the neighborhood. And that's what would happen.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Bart Tabor. 12537 Harold. I've done a little investigation, or I said my niece did. We already have land that was bought by people that are developers, and none of you can deny that you don't know them, and that you don't know they're up there. I dare anybody, because if I find out that one of you guys are connected with that, you're apt to get your ass sued. Now, there's a couple places that have been bought. I'm sorry, Bodie, but they have, or whatever your name is. But they are there. You can't deny it. So what are we doing? You've got developers already there that have bought them houses. I know for a fact, my niece is a lawyer, but she doesn't practice, she went down and investigated. So there are names that are popping up that own this property, this property, this property, other names. So we have people there buying speculators, I call them, and you can't deny it. I dare one of you to get up and deny that you don't know that. It's a fact. You're saying, how many people in your neighborhood have houses that have been sold lately that a developer or somebody not in the neighborhood that had bought them? They're not doing anything with the land. And they even have the mobile homes open. There's one that kids can get into, doesn't even have a door on it. I would suggest they put the windows and the doors, make it our kids safe. They have abandoned houses that they haven't even boarded up, but they bought the property. And if you want to take an investigation, my niece told me I shouldn't even talk aloud about it. Well, damn it, if anybody wants me hurt, go right ahead. My property's sitting on that line that Bodie wants to put a road in, I'd be all gone. Now, somebody knows that they're building up there or buying up. One of you guys knows the developers are buying there. So whoever's doing it, you better tell them it's not gonna do them any good. And don't pretend you don't know. That's even worse.
My name is Terry A. Cox. I live at 400 East Fifth Street. I wasn't planning on speaking because I knew that the residents would be prepared. I'm hearing a couple of differences, and so I wanted to address that as someone who's been trying to listen for understanding throughout this process since I became involved. I've attended some meetings, and I've been following the residents' leadership comments carefully. I was surprised to see the options as written. I was aware, Brody, from your email, about the first three. And those are consistent with what I understood would be said. And my understanding was that, from what I heard from leadership, number three was desired, that maintaining the current boundary for commercial development was desired, keeping everything east of that was desired as residential. And what was added, because I did not hear number four, I didn't hear it in person, and I didn't hear it when I reviewed the video, so, you know, listening is hard. But what I heard was not that there would never be an annexation. In fact, the Heights Heritage Committee has posted numerous times in social media, if an owner wants to annex, they should be free to annex. So number four is not consistent with what has been stated either in meetings that I could hear or in social media. So number four presents a view that is so extreme that I don't think that it really reflects the community. I understand confusion about this. I didn't know much about zoning before all of this, and I still don't know much. But I would have thought number one would be a good idea too, until I learned how much risk it puts the community into for more commercial development and industrial development. In the March second meeting, Brody, you mentioned that there was an LLC that was in, I think, the annexation process, that had bought nineteen parcels right across the community center, and that it would be logical to you to allow, if they asked for it, a commercial or an industrial zoning. Am I remembering right? Okay. Because there was already industrial or commercial zoning there. But this would be in the residential area, and that's an example of the encroachment that would happen with number one, right? Okay. So number one, to me, is not a good idea, and I think for the people who've been able to get into the complexity of it, would say, we don't want that kind of annexation and zoning change in our community. So number two is a problem, from what I hear, because it still takes like thirty homes that are currently residential and places them in a commercial zone eventually, potentially, if they sell. So the problem that I have is like, number three is really, that's it. That's what I have heard people saying, that's what I want. I want no more commercial development, I want residential. And the part of number four that I've heard requested through the Heights Heritage Committee and through other social media is, just don't rezon anything now, not in the process. If you're having a process that has integrity, don't be moving on that nineteen parcel LLC request if they are requesting a change. But I never heard them say they would never annex. They're saying the opposite, and I see my time is up. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Manu Vizbala, Marv Velazos. I'm president of the Farm Labor Organization Committee, AFL-CIO. I'm wondering what my skin in the game is here. First of all, we have members, and we have, that have lived there, we have family there, we have relatives there, and they've asked us to support their struggle to keep their homes intact, to protect from commercial development. I remember back in the sixties that many migrant families settled out there, built their homes there. And somehow, we need to be on the right side of history in terms of respecting people's development. Although I understand your challenge to keep a vibrant community, have economic development, right jobs, income for the city, fund your schools, fund your other items that every community needs. However, when it comes to something like this, we need to be on the right side of history, folks. I think twenty years from now, thirty years from now, maybe fifty years from now, you look back at what you did now, there's wisdom in scripture, and Proverbs 22:28 says, "Not move the ancient boundaries set by your ancestors." And you wonder why God speaks those kinds of words, because you know, when you move the boundaries, you displace people, you move them. And like in our experience, as farm workers, migrant workers, and we're not just the migrant worker union, we're a community union as well, because we have problems outside the workplace, we have problems where we live, public policies, issues such as this, and the children, the grandchildren who've been born and raised in Perrysburg Heights, are descendants of those ancestors. And we have to respect their drive and their lives to develop their community, to develop their relationships, to stay firm, to keep things together. You don't want to disperse people. We've seen this in history, time and time again. My undergraduate studies I did in South Texas, when all the people in the Rio Grande Valley were displaced by the 1910 Revolution, many people, Mexican landowners, were pushed off by the land by the then supposedly Texas Rangers, that were not an official law enforcement agency, they were a vigilante group, supposedly protecting white settlers from Mexican bandits of the Revolution. And consequently, in ten short years, the ownership of those lands changed from Anglo surname, from Spanish surname to Anglo surnames. James Polk, with the euphemism of manifest destiny, was another case in point in the wrong-headed history of development and expansionism of this country. We've seen that time and time again, the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, who stole all those lands in the Southwest from Mexican landowners. You don't want to be part of that history. You want to be compassionate rulers of this city, government people, working with people like Leah, working with people from the Perrysburg Heights community, to get a mishmash of these plans of what's convenient for them. Now, I just had a national board meeting and housed some of my folks over here at Levis Commons. And I wanted to check in, you know, the jagged line businesses there. And so we had lunch, dinner, a couple nights there, a couple days, and I went around and looked around the back of those businesses, abutting the private ownership of the people of Perrysburg Heights on the other side of that supposed jagged line, a bunch of dump cans back there. Now, who in the heck would want development like that with a bunch of garbage cans in the backyard? I would say, renovate everything there, work with them, say, how can we get rid of all this crap, you know, that's in my backyard? That would be helpful. I mean, it would certainly create some kind of environment, you know, for me living next to that jagged line. And I think that if you work with the people and you come up with a plan to pick out the best features- best features of that that's convenient for them, I'm telling you that you will be blessed when the community begins to support you and talk about, when you talk about your plans for development, and I know it's the water lines, you know, but there's plenty of farmland on the other side of Levis Commons. Buy that land, run water lines out there, and develop the commercial development over there, put your other high-income housing over there. But in the meantime, try to increase the quality of life in the Perrysburg Heights by finding programs, create some funds to create situations where they can remodel their homes and build them up, and make it a livable, convenient community. So I'm saying to you that flocks stand behind these folks here, and we were going to do whatever we can to help them come to an agreeable solution to this tension that obviously is necessary, but I'm glad there's good engagement going on. And I know that you're wise people. I know that you're smart people. I know that you're probably good people. I don't know any of you. I know you love your families, you do good, you think you're doing everything good for the community. I believe you believe that, and I believe you. And I think that because of that, that you're good enough to come to some kind of reconciliated effort with the people of Perrysburg Heights. So I thank you very much, and I'll support any good plan that you could come jointly agree with. Thank you.
Sorry, how come you're getting anxiety so quickly? So my name is Salia Ramirez. I'm from Perrysburg Heights. I grew up there my whole life, and I represent also Homeboys, which is a charity motorcycle club that my father started about six years ago in honor of my brother that passed away that was killed. We also, the Homeboys, stand behind the Heights. Obviously, you guys know that's where we're from. It's crazy, you know, I'm sitting here listening, and I don't know a lot that's going on. I'm just kind of getting informed by my cousin Leah and you. I watch you as I sit here, and I see you yawn, is it Brody? I see you yawn, and like, as if you don't care. And it's kind of like, it's like, that's what, all we dealt with growing up. Since I was a little girl, like, to us, the Heights was our safe zone. But like, anytime leaving here, it's like the city would look down on us. We would get pulled over, we would get harassed. I got, I remember the principal from the junior high calling, and my parents, like, come and get your daughter, they're in a gang, they have Homeboys. And it's just like, we're always, always getting picked on. Just leave us alone. We were fine, we grew up there, we had no issues. We were in one of the safest neighborhoods, and we just asked, just leave us alone. If there's an issue at the way it looks, then talk to us, work together, that's how things get done. You guys might not care because you guys don't live there, you didn't grow up there, you know? And I don't live there now, but I do care. I don't want to see the Heights go that, I mean, that means a lot to me. My grandparents and my great, they built that, you know? And for Perrysburg to come in and take it over, I believe it's all about the look. It's because they look at us and they say, oh, look at them. Perrysburg is growing, we need to make money, let's get rid of them. That's how it's always been. And you guys can sit here and, you know, you can disagree with me, but I know personally, growing up, that's how we felt. And we're tired of it. We're tired of it, and we're, this is, this is what you see right now, but just wait, we're going to grow stronger. And you guys, I pray that you guys do the right thing, because this will really affect us. So I pray that you do the right thing, and work with us, just work with us. That's all we ask. We have a bunch of good people in the Heights that are doing good things out there, so just work with us. That's all we ask. So thank you.
All right. We'll take a couple more comments, and I see one of us can offer up.
Good evening. My name's Michael Curtis. I live at 12545 Roosevelt Drive Boulevard. Moved in there a week ago, but plans on investing thousands of dollars into my ex-wife's property. We backed together, don't we? Now, should I keep my money in my pocket? Can you guarantee me that my money is not going to go to waste by me cleaning up the property, maybe building a garage? Seems like a waste of money to me, because you don't know where you're going. After all these months, you don't have a definitive answer. Can anyone guarantee I won't waste my money? Thank you.
All right. I think we've heard the public comment. Do we want to, does anyone at council want to speak to any of the options?
I want to actually just speak on a couple items here real quick.
Okay.
So a few things that I heard here that I just wanted to make clarify, from either the wasting the money, issues with seeing some of these properties in disrepair, to for grants and programs for the community heights, having us assist with that. Right now, where things are, Perrysburg Community Heights is actually Perrysburg Township. We don't have control over, we can't say what can and cannot happen in the Perrysburg Heights community. What I mean by that is, I know that there have been historically market pressures on the Heights community for development, and this is something that we are seeing happening all over our community even as well. But what I, I guess what the point is I'm trying to make is that if the Perrysburg Community Heights was looking to have the protection of the city, we can talk about this plan all we want, but that doesn't change the fact that this plan doesn't mean anything for how the Perrysburg Community Heights is currently in the township. The township, we can't, we can say that we would keep this the same, but that doesn't necessarily mean someone would not come in and want to rezone within the township where things currently are. We can't control that. What I would, if, the best way that I would say that would be a good option is if Perrysburg Community Heights was looking to voluntarily annex in under a way that would, option that would work for them, that would be the best way that we could put protections on there. I know I've met with Paul, and I've talked about that there are potentially some savings with that. I am not by any means recommending any forceful annexation or anything else, but there's nothing that we can do to protect for programming. We don't have any access to put money into a community that is not part of the city. And if there's issues with properties and the conditions of what some of these speculators are doing on those properties, there's nothing that we can do to force them to fix anything up. I guess that's really what my point is right now with some of the things that I've heard.
Let me add though, Jonathan, we do support the Perrysburg Heights Community Association.
We do.
Every year, we, I forget the amount, it's fifteen.
It's ten, I think it's ten thousand dollars, does that sound about right? Twenty thou, uh, twenty thousand, sorry.
So is that it?
Twenty thousand dollars we give the Perrysburg Community Heights Association, but it's, we're giving that into a township entity.
Mark?
Maybe you should give your name to the folks listening on the phone.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm Mark Weber, City Council. I jotted down some thoughts, and I want to make sure I get them out there, so bear with me as I read them. First of all, I want to thank everyone for the emails we've been getting and everyone that spoke here tonight, because it's very important that we do hear from you, and I really appreciate everyone that communicated with us. In my opinion, the revised version, once known as the Brody option, is known as option two now. It makes good city planning sense to buffer commercial traffic from a residential area if we were talking about an undeveloped area. I can't get behind it in an area that's already established. So, but for the past several months, the residents of the Heights have been told, this land use plan is nothing more than a concept, merely a vision of what it could be. And if you don't sell your property, nothing will happen. Now, while all that is true, I try to put myself in the position of the person that holds firm, doesn't sell their property for commercial development, but everyone else around them does. And that's where I would have a problem there too, because that person or family could someday be completely surrounded by strip stores, parking lots, dumpster enclosures, and I get that. Even though we've told that person, don't sell your property, nothing happened, but it's not, you know, the people around him can, so... And if we vote to adopt a plan, like option two, with even the slightest chance of eminent domain that could someday be used, that person that's holding firm would have to wake up every morning, wondering, is this going to be the day that I get a letter that's saying, you know, everyone else around me sold, and I have to? So that scenario is really not very likely, but with option two, it is still possible. It could happen. By now, everyone should be aware that whatever option we adopt in the plan, it offers no guarantee of what may or may not happen in this area. The land use plan is only good, any land use plan we adopt today or this year is only good until the next land use plan, could be ten, fifteen, twenty years, which will be adopted by a different council. So the bottom line is, the city cannot offer permanent zoning to a neighborhood that's still in the township. And I realize, I was elected by city residents. I have an obligation to the taxpayers to make decisions that's in their best interest. But to put a second layer of commercial development ahead of a peaceful sanctity of an established neighborhood just does not seem to be in anyone's best interest to me, especially when there's acres of undeveloped land to the immediate south and to the immediate west of the Heights community. So I want everyone to know that I will support a plan that does not suggest any future commercial development in the Perrysburg Heights beyond the existing boundaries or jagged line, both the same. And now, while I'm aware that that jagged line for a city boundary does not make good sense for a city planner, but I'm equally aware that this is a unique situation with a unique neighborhood. It's not any town USA. It's, we're fortunate to have the Perrysburg Heights as neighbors, and I truly mean that. The community center does many wonderful things for the entire area, and I hope that someday the neighborhood will consider annexation that will give them permanent zoning classification, one that'll provide permanent protection from the future of commercial growth. We live in the city, I live in a residential neighborhood in the city, I know there's not going to be a tire store or a car wash built next to me because I have permanent zoning. I know that. And that's what would happen if you were, you know, in the city, but as long as you're in the township, you know, we can only do so much in it, but we can at least offer that we will do all we can to keep everything, you know, residential in the way it is. So I am full supporter of that, that option three.
Mark, as usual, it takes half my words.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I just want to make clear, I would never, ever support eminent domain of any property in the Heights by the city. I am not for forced annexation of anything, any property in the Heights. Mark would agree. And to me, the worst possible outcome would be for us to take option one. It was alluded to earlier, and I'll tell you why. Because unfortunately, property owners who would sell against, up to whoever with, that has existing property alongside commercial and is already part of the city, and then wants to come to us and annex it into the city as commercial, we can tell them, no, it will go to court, and we will lose. To me, this whole thing, and I admit, the way it started was wrong, totally wrong. So let's get it right now, because if we don't put into our master plan that this land can only come in zoned as single-family or duplex, that's, that's the best protection we can offer you. I'm not saying we're going to annex it. Like I said earlier, I am not for forced annexation of this area, but if they want to annex, we have to have something in there to justify why we cannot allow it to come in as commercial. And this master plan, for at least the ten years, gives us justification that, most importantly, will stand up in a court of law. And that's the best protection we can give you guys.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, so I'm just going to kind of speak off the cuff here. I don't like preparing it. I feel like I'm more honest and authentic when I speak to you from my heart. I've been a resident of Perrysburg for eight years now. I'm new to council, I think many of you know that. So I have a really, I want to say, objective view. When I, when I didn't live in the city, I remember looking at the map, and I saw Perrysburg Heights community, and I, I saw that it is, it's been referred to as an island, and I just could only speculate as to why that happened. I know, sir, you mentioned your properties along that blue line. I can only imagine, I don't know where it is on that blue line, but for other people to sell their property and then to build roads up to wherever you're at, you know, in the event that, you know, that property may change and continually, potentially whittle away at that community. I will kind of offend Brody here. Brody's good at what he does, he's very, somebody said logical. But we're dealing with culture here too, right? We're dealing with people. And myself, who came from, I'm a labor guy, so I mean, you know that, you know? And I worked hard. I wasn't, I wasn't born with a silver spoon in my mouth. I went through some pretty tough times with my family. My income was very low, and we just went through some rough times, but I fought, I got my way out of it, and I believe in homeownership. I would like to see, I think I'm with the other council people here, I would like to see you all as a part of the city of Perrysburg at some point in time, but I don't believe forcefully changing that, nor manipulating that area is going to be beneficial to anybody, the city, or even if you're in the township still. So that's just kind of my statements on it. I hope you have a little, my heart goes out to many of you, and I know it took a lot of courage for some of you to stand up there and speak, and I just, I can't say thank you enough for standing up for what you believe in. This is America, and this is what makes us strong, so thanks again.
I want to draw for the comment, Mr. Vasquez, your comments were interesting, and actually, it's kind of an honor to have you here. But how we got to option two was really reflected by what you saw. We thought the Heights folks who live behind that jagged line, you know, is that they need to look at a bunch of, you know, garbage recyclable things. Wouldn't it be better to have an alternative like this that might or might not occur over time, so that the Heights community could, and also, there were some traffic advantages of this, that the Heights community, that in the residential area, didn't have to look at stuff like that? But that admittedly was a long-term vision. As Mark pointed out, and as Kevin alluded to, unfortunately, we're not riding on a clean slate. There's thirty homes, I guess, is the number Paul cited, and I've heard it repeated enough times, I believe he was correct, that are impacted or remain in that transition area. And I, I think that this line drawing has really gotten us off what a comprehensive plan should be, but I can't disassociate myself from that because I chair that committee. So if I, I mean, a comprehensive plan shouldn't be sorting down to this level of detail. What we were trying and are trying to accomplish is that that commercial area along 25 right now is not a very productive commercial frontage, and it's right across from one of the, you know, one of the best, I think, mixed-use developments in Northwest Ohio with Levis Commons. And so from a city standpoint, we thought, you know, we're representing 26,000 people in the city, 25,000 people in the city, and I always feel like we're also representing the other 20 or so in the township, right? I believe we're one community. And I, we got to that idea because in the long-term interest of the community as a whole, if you're trying to say, this is how we should plan for our future and our development, that was a good way to do it. And so I really, when I, as I came in tonight, I did... And so I, really, when I, as I came in tonight, I have another option, but I'm not going to present it because we got enough. I thought that that commercial area that's a shallow band along 25 does exist, and we all have to acknowledge it. And I thought that we should have some flexibility without all these lines and all this stuff to make sure that any further commercial development is high-quality, and that it's an effective buffer to transition to the Heights. And that it enhanced what we already have on State Route 25, because the development along State Route 25 does provide employment opportunities for people. It provides support for the school systems. It's a desirable thing communities would want to have. So our responsibility, I think, to the city and to the community is, okay, if we've got a good thing going on State Route 25, which interestingly, years ago, we called it the comprehensive plan, our employment corridor. That was the purpose of having it. We wanted to have development there that would support the entire community and provide job opportunities. I, none of us support the use of eminent domain, that's been quite clear. And I, I felt that we ought to not have rigid borders such as options two and three present. Rather, a concept that we, what we want to have are two things. We want to have quality commercial development along State Route 25, and we want to then have that area be a very effective buffer and transition to the residential area behind it. I think Brody estimated that's about 80% of the Heights. I, I still think that's the best answer. If council chooses or supports option three, I suppose I can live with that too. I, I'll have to give it some thought, but I think, I don't know that that's the best solution for the city. As I said, there's, we've got a good group tonight. I think there are probably 70 or 80 of you who made it in the door tonight because we knew we'd have a big crowd. And we're obviously interested in your thoughts, but remember, there's probably, not probably, there are at least 25,000 other people who have thoughts on this subject, and I'd say probably another 20 in the township. So that's, I guess, about where I stand, Jonathan. I don't know, we can't vote on anything tonight, and maybe I should have mentioned that at the beginning. It's a, we're in a committee as a whole, so the law doesn't permit us to take a vote.
You can't recommend to ourselves, but...
Yeah. I guess I'd say, it sounds as if the consensus is trending toward option three. Is that something that can be developed and put in ordinance for next Tuesday?
Make a recommendation, take our letter if it has that comment.
If what you're looking for is to make option three part of land use plan, you can, as a group tonight, move option three forward as part of the land use plan, but I would not recommend doing separate ordinances for different parts of the land use plan. I would simply do one land use plan. So if what, you can, as a group, make a recommendation for what we advance to city council, which is the same group, but you can make a recommendation for which of these plans it is that you want to move forward for city council.
Jonathan, I don't know if you have any thoughts on option three or...
Honestly, when I talk about the Perrysburg Heights community coming in, I think that would be the best option to come in at. But I do believe it would be in the best interest for the Perrysburg Heights community to come into the city of Perrysburg sooner rather than later under that option, because again, we can't guarantee any protections with how things are. We have no control over what can happen while inside the township. The only thing we can do is say, this is what we would see with coming into the city of Perrysburg, but there's nothing that the city can control in future development as things currently lie. Anything can happen outside of the city, and we don't have a say in what happens in the township. I don't think I've been correct in that.
I have a question for you, Tim. Just for clarification, option four would not be, will be enforced because of property right issues?
I, well, I don't practice in that area of the law. I think it's very problematic, and I have a lot of issues with option four, but it didn't sound like anyone was really advocating that.
I just wanted to clarify that. We would, there would never be property rights issues involved anymore.
It really impacts directly the interest of property owners. I think it's very difficult to say a property owner. In fact, if you want to annex or rezone, we were in a decision on what, the application, how that application would be decided. So that, that sounds to me like you're taking at least some of the property owner's rights of that.
To clarify what you're saying, Jonathan, you're absolutely right about, right now, there's nothing we can do because it's township. They would not, you know, the township, it's in the township, there's nothing we can do. But taking option three protects them from being annexed, property owners annexing land in anything other than what we want them to, which would be residential, at that jagged line, residential, single-family or duplex home. That's a protection we can offer them with option.
It's a protection, but it doesn't stop anything happening while they're outside of the city.
In the township. I just want to make that clear, and differentiate between the city and the township. Because we all know, there's nothing we can do about the township. But what we can do is, if someone wants to annex it, they have to annex it according to our master plan, which would be, I just wanted to make that clarification.
And I'd really hate to see all these folks have to go through all this in another 10 or 15 years with the next land use plan. The next consultants, be a whole different group out of Columbus or wherever we would hire them from, and they might come in and start making the same kind of recommendations that this last one made. And then we're going to be back in this exact same spot. So like I said earlier, this land use plan that we adopt is only as good as the next land use plan.
This isn't really even a, this isn't even a guarantee, right? I mean, this is a roadmap.
That's all it's ever been, is a vision or...
And that's part of my, I guess, my issue with it. While I'd like to trust that one of these options is, you know, we can go with the best entrance of the current council and working with the administration, it doesn't really guarantee, you know, the current state is going to be, let's say, maintained, right? Perrysburg Heights.
But I know that when, when someone comes before us for annexation, I'm going to refer back to what we talked about tonight, and I'm not going to support any commercial annexation beyond that jagged line.
Well, I agree with that. Point is, in eight years, it could be a whole different council. Every one of us may not be up here, and they may look at that and say, that's old and outdated, and we're going to go with something different, without even looking at another land use plan.
But on the other hand, option one is the worst possible option for the Heights. Because what will happen, that boss wants to tell me, you cannot eat an elephant in one bite, but you can eat it with lots of bites. And that's what would happen to the Heights if we, if we do not put something into our master plan to justify not letting that be annexed in as commercial.
I think we all agree that.
And the Heights will disappear if we go with option one. And none of us want to see that.
I know we don't necessarily have a vote or anything, but it does sound to me everyone's leaning with option three. It just, again, it's a piece of paper. It can be ripped up in four years and six years, and someone, the new administration could come in, want to see something different.
But it's better than nothing.
I don't disagree, but again, it's never going to provide a future protection, long-term.
Mister, I guess we're co-chairs now.
We're sorry.
Does it sound to you like the prevailing view here is to go with option three?
Well, I mean, I can make a recommendation that we adopt, we move forward with option three to city council as a whole, even though we have a couple members missing. I don't know if anyone else is in favor of that.
I don't want to upset the community because I've listened to everything they said, but I do need to know from city council. There is one single parcel of land that is currently on the east side of the jagged line that has been discussed as being placed on the west side of the jagged line because they have requested annexation to be able to make that specific commercial property square. And are you going to, are we, am I to now tell those, them that that will not happen? Because we have already, we filed wants with, with the township, and the documents were sent back because they were in plea. So we're sort of in the middle of that for that piece of property.
That's that tiny piece behind Taco Bell.
I think it's right where he's got the air.
He's got the cursor there.
Right, and it doesn't include a house.
No, there is not a house on that property. So I don't want to in any way mislead anyone or upset anyone that, oh, we're going to do this, and then we're not going to do, and then they see it go through annexation application with my name on it as law director for the city of Perrysburg. My question is...
Does everyone understand that piece, that little piece she's talking about? I think you're all familiar with it. I know you are, Leah. Does anyone have a problem with, because if we say we're going to make everything on the side of the jagged line residential tonight...
I don't think you guys should be allowed to make any decision until you decide on what plan is going to be presented and voted on. I think everything should be at a pause until this land use plan is worked out, and I just want to make one thing clear. While I understand that you and the city aren't making, able to provide us protection, I am full understanding, and the people that I talk to are full understanding, that this is only one piece of the pie. Because this was brought to our attention so abruptly, we have to handle this and then go to the township and try to handle how we use our development plan with them. Because as their constituents, they owe that to us. So, and saying that, then we can discuss about further down the line about, nobody's in this committee has said that you cannot annex. You've never said that. That's why I, that's why I was vaying about bringing for, and I just want that to be clear. Because you can, we're not telling nobody they can't annex. They should be allowed to annex. That's also a property right issue, if you really want to get into reality. What I'm saying is, is that we understand that that can't provide any protections, but Jan is right, you can at the minimum do that. And I think that that annexate, that request for commercialization shouldn't go forward until we agree upon this. I mean, that's out of just respect for us as the residents, considering the process that we've already been put into this. I think that's a great way for the city to say, listen, we're going to try to make this right, and that's how we're going to do it. We're going to put into place the option and vote on the option that's most beneficial to the Heights, and then discuss about annexation to make any commercialization, whether a house exists or not. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you that the residents may not be okay with that because they, they probably will. But I'm not going to say that right now without speaking to them, because that's a disrespect to them, and that's the promise that I made to them as their, as their community unofficial leader.
I was going to pick the recommendation. We have something else that's come up here, so I think it's, it far is further conversation.
I think we need to move this along. And I'd say put a footnote or something on those two parcels that are...
It's one parcel.
One, it's one 25-foot parcel, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd have the jagged line at that point moved to, allow that to be commercially annexed, I think. You know, because I'm looking to Brody and Kate. Can this be done so the council can adopt it by ordinance next Tuesday?
The whole land use plan by ordinance.
The whole land use. I mean, Kate's ordinance probably isn't all that difficult. The burden really falls on Brody and Mark to do some redrafting or whatever. Can that occur by next Tuesday?
I'm going to say probably not.
By following meeting then? Did you make a motion?
That'll be as Tim suggested.
For the record, for the poor person down here, what's the motion?
So it would be moving with option three, moving the jagged line for that one piece of parcel that is pending.
Yeah, draft the legislation to adopt the land use plan, as Jonathan just said.
Excuse me, sir, I want to make sure we all hear...
It's a right to be a bad person. And he was right, I think you ought to stop there. If you want to form a committee, you speak directly with Leo's group and come to reconsideration for next steps, and then maybe move to a broader agreement with any further development steps. I see this time and time again, I've been in fights all over, staying in place, people not listening to each other. And particularly people in government, you've got authority, legal authority, to shove things down people's throats. And as a result, you end up leaking what you sold years later. And I'm just telling you right now, there's a lot of creative things that can be done legally, and I'm sure you've got the smartest people in the world working for you. And they can be created, but you've got to come to agreement with the people in the community to make one small fist of, I mean, make that a square property? Come on, what is that? To annex, you know, a little piece of land, you're already encroaching on some of the people's property. Some of those parking lots are really on private property. And there's a lot of legal matters that are in question here, and I think you ought to stop. You need to come through the community and set up a committee and have a serious discussion, you know, one of those long-term discussions, start at 6 o'clock and go until midnight, and until you come to an agreement. There's got to be agreement in about the next step. You don't have to agree on everything down the road, just what the next proper step is, and we'll go from there.
What you're missing is that, as I read what I'm hearing this group say, they want, no, you took the options down.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the map.
They support the concept embodied in option three. And I think we're prepared to proceed with that. That's what, that's what the discussion tonight, I think, is yielding. And we, I mean, we'll continue to engage in dialogue if the township wants to involve us in some of that discussion that was formed. We'll be happy to be a part of that. But as, I had forgotten what Paul pointed out, this really goes back about a year now. It's been under discussion, so there's been a lot that happened that got us here. Yes, sir?
Hey, Sam, Leo. I'm worried about the work that you're doing, that's not in option three, but it's in option four. You got a road on Jefferson there, that is counter, count Jefferson, this side, city on that side. And we discussed it earlier about people wanting to go and annex in there already. The center is right there, a lot of people playing over there, and you're talking about maybe making commercial. I don't like that idea at all. I see kids up and down that street all the time, and I want protection on the head end also, not just on the lots.
That's been protected under all the options. It's residential under all options.
Well, and Art said, you talked about earlier that you already asked for an annexation. Are those going to be stopped then? When they go to make a commercial?
I'm not sure. I, I'm not exactly familiar with that location, but if it's out there across from the Heights, roughly, our plan would say it should be residential.
Say it right here.
Where is it, Brody? You got the cursor? That would be residential.
They're not confusing just the Heights as a north, south, east, west point, they're using it as a entirety, as how it sits on the map. Am I right?
That's correct.
So technically, option three would be the, quote, the protection. So it's nothing but then being a good use zone that's commercial in that area, talking as a whole.
But you know what we're trying to say on that? One little sliver there behind Taco Bell.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. Yeah, I completely understand. I just know that there are people here that that would, or there are people not present that that would be a conversation I feel should be owed to them. That's why I said, I'm not going to speak for them yet, to tell them that that could potentially be commercial. And that's the part that you guys currently have, houses to look at to zone that as commercial, whether it's an empty lot or not, just I feel that's only right, as what I signed up for, to at least let them know that.
Would you be able to communicate to them and then communicate back to...
I can ask, you know, you directed Mark, he probably wants that conversation to the head.
Yes, so maybe we can keep this timeline because we want to get this...
I mean, I would love for it to be, yeah, done as quickly as possible, before we need to talk to him.
Thank you.
The objections on option three as presented? A 5-0 recommendation to council? 5-0, yes.
I'm not a good counter.
So that'll be the recommendation to council as a whole. So, that'll be the recommendation to council as a whole. And...
Do we want to adjourn? You said you're going to adjourn recess and then we'll wind up the rest of the plan.
Thank you to everyone here. Thank you for...